Okay, we're ready to go.
Good evening and welcome to the City of Oxnard Planning Commission meeting, regular meeting for Thursday, June seventeen, two thousand and twenty one. A quick housekeeping item in accordance with Governing Nuisance Executive Order and dash twenty-nine dash twenty, members of the Commissionists and some staff will be participating via teleconference. As shown on the agenda and online, please email all written public comments to planning at Oxnard dot org. For those wishing to speak, may visit Oxnard dot org slash city dash meetings to fill out the speaker form or call eight oh five three eight five seven eight seven eight by two P M. The day of the meeting. For my colleagues, please use the raise hand feature when you wish to speak. Once you have been called on, please then click the hand again to lower. When making a motion or seconding, please clearly state your last name for the record. Because the meeting is electronic, all votes will be done by roll call. And as a side note, at the conclusion of our regular agenda, we will be moving into our subcommittee for rules and procedures. With that, Madam Secretary, if we can have the roll call, please.
Chair Chavez?
Yep.
Vice Chair Ojo?
Here.
Commissioner Connolly?
Present.
Commissioner Lopez?
Here.
Commissioner Meyer?
Here.
Commissioner Nash?
Present.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you for that, and we'll go to Mr. Colwitz for a quick announcement.
Thank you, Chair Chavez and members of the Commission. I wanted to announce that we have a new member of staff that's joining us tonight that you'll become familiar with as time goes on. I don't think we're going to be able to get her in camera here, but Jessica Montaroso has been with the city team for about three months now. She's been an understudy, if you will, to D. Lie, who's your recording secretary extraordinaire. So you're, you should expect to have some level of communication with Jessica as time goes on. And as she's learning the ropes of the planning mission. So essentially, whenever Dee would have to step out, Jessica will be stepping in as we move forward here. So if you were all here, you could see her wave, we'll pretend that just happened, and thank you all for welcoming her into the planning commission family. There she is.
Hi. Awesome. Welcome, Jessica, and of course, thank you to Dee for all her hard work, keeping us informed. So we'll go ahead and move on to our next item, which is our pledge of allegiance. Commissioner Connolly, would you mind leading us, please?
For sure. Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that, Commissioner Connolly. We'll now move into public comments. This is for members of the public wishing to address the planning commission regarding any items not on the agenda, but within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission may do so at this time. The commission cannot take action on any items presented during public comments and will be referred to the commission secretary. All public comment speakers will be limited to three minutes. Madam Secretary, just to confirm, we do not have any public comments, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. So we'll move into our next item, which is our consent agenda approval of our minutes from June third, two thousand and twenty-one. Commissioners?
Chair Chavez, I move to approve the minutes as provided.
Okay, Commissioner Dr. Lopez.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Meyer, a second by Commissioner Dr. Lopez. Madam Secretary, if we can have the roll call, please.
Commissioner Meyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Connolly?
Yes.
Commissioner Nash?
Hi.
Commissioner Sanchez?
I abstain. I was on vacation on jumper.
Okay. Vice Chair Ojo? Chair Chavez?
Hi.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We'll now move into our ex parte declarations for public hearing items. Vice Chair Reho?
None, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Connolly?
None.
Thank you. Commissioner Dr. Lopez?
None. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Doc, Commissioner Meyer?
None, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Nash?
None.
Thank you. Commissioner Sanchez?
None.
Thank you, and none for myself. So we'll move into our public hearing item. Subject name is the SoCal Edison Mandalay Substation Planning and zoning permit number twenty dash four hundred dash oh four, coastal development permit. The applicant proposes to remove equipment associated with the Mandalay two hundred and twenty K V substation and replace with limited backfill materials located at North Harbor Boulevard approximately point seventy-five miles south of Gonzales Road within the coastal energy facilities zone. This is filed by Kimberly Cuevas from Southern California Edison. The recommendation is that the planning commission find the project to be category exempt from environmental review and adopt the resolution approving the planning and zoning permit number twenty dash four hundred zero four. Our city staff is Jay Dubarowski, senior planner, and we'll go to staff if they have a quick summary of this item.
Thank you, Chair Chavez. I'll just give you a extremely brief summary of the project. This project is Southern California Edison decommissioning one of the existing substations that's at the Mandalay generating facility. The above-ground electrical equipment and power lines and poles would be removed. Those items are shown in the staff report that's in attachment B. That's also available online on the pre-recorded video. The project includes minimal ground disturbance, and as such, it includes a restoration plan that's prepared by a qualified biologist to reseed and replant any sandy areas that are outside the fenced substation area. That's a bit about the project. I do have one item to note, and that is staff is recommending that your commission delete the condition of approval number eighteen. That condition was erroneously included in the recommended conditions of approval. With that, staff and also the applicant team are available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Dubarowski. Does the applicant have a presentation or only available for questions?
Yes, Chair Chavez, the applicant does not have a specific presentation. They are available for questions.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I'll open it up to commissioners for any questions. We'll do both either for staff or for the applicant. If there are no questions. Commissioner Connolly?
I just have a quick general question. I watched the the staff report online and read through the report, but is the power plant functioning or is it totally out of, no longer functioning? Or and is this just a part of it that's no longer going to be working?
Yes, Commissioner Connolly, the applicant can go into detail. This, the current project before you is for a substation that's a smaller part of the larger power plant.
Thank you for your clarification.
Thank you. We'll go to, well, let me see if the applicant's available to add any additional information to that.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Yes, just to add to staff's comments, the Mandalay two twenty K V substation, which is owned and operated by Southern California Edison, is currently inoperable. So it is a customer dedicated substation that generated, that provided electrical service to the Mandalay generating station. And as a result of planned retirement of that facility, our facility is, is essentially off. And so that allows us to move forward with complete decommissioning and removing all above-ground equipment.
Thank you. Commissioner Connolly, did you have any further questions or no? Commissioner Nash?
Thank you, Chair Chavez. Jay, I just want, I just want to clarify this, that the condition eighteen involved the easement deed, and that's, and that's, and we're not asking for that right now.
Yes, Commissioner Nash, staff recommends that your commission delete that condition.
Very good. Thank you.
Vice Chair Reho?
Thank you, Chair. A question for the applicant. At this time, are you able to tell us if you are removing this part of the installation in preparation for building something else in the future? Is that a possibility or do you have, or there's no plans at this time? Just curious and yeah, a couple other things in the back of my mind.
Sure. So at this point, Southern California Edison has no plan, so we would be leaving the property vacant. And then to that end, if we were ever to choose to sell or dispose of the property, you know, we would have to go through an environmental site assessment remediation and would be working with the City of Oxnard and other agencies for those plans. So to that end, we're kind of just assuming that this will remain vacant and at some point maybe it would, you know, go to someone else, but we have no plans for development. If we were to ever choose to develop this property, it would require a brand-new coastal development that would be, that would have to be approved by the City of Oxnard. So since that kind of seems unlikely, you know, we're assuming that we'll not move forward with anything.
Thank you, Ms. Cuivas, and thank you, Chair. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Meyer?
Thank you, Chair. Just, I might have missed it just for clarification. So what is the reason that we are not including condition eighteen, the, the return of the deed, the easement deed? That's for staff.
And Commissioner Meyer, members of the commission, the condition essentially looks for new easements along the beachfront for purposes of public access. This project is not proposing new development. It's proposing to take development away from the beach. It's not something that's causing a need for the public to gain additional access to the, the beach at this point in time. So if staff was to try to link that idea of nexus, a project's impact and a government ask, we don't see there being nexus to ask for this one. And the second question, even if there was, there's a question of rough proportionality. So as we're looking for a development to provide something to the city, how proportionate is that to the ask? The ask essentially in this one is to remove development, if you will, not to propose new things. So we just don't find that there's reasoning to include this particular condition for this project.
I see. Thank you, Mr. Colwitz.
Welcome.
Okay, Commissioner Dr. Lopez?
Thank you. Two quick questions. First, very much appreciated the applicant undertaking the biology study as a part of this item before us. Were there any sensitive items that the study found? I know that the presentation indicated that there was no significant environmental impacts, but were there any threats to the environment that were identified in the process of that study?
We are located within sensitive vegetation communities. So to that end, we have, we've obviously conducted biological and vegetation surveys in advance of, to support the coastal development permit. And then we would also be doing various measures, including having a biologist on site during construction to limit impacts to the vegetation. So we do know that there are a couple species of plants that are in the general vicinity that could occur, however, we did not at this point locate any. So our intent is just basically to use as much of the existing access as possible, install vegetation mats, and just kind of drive and crush and limit those impacts.
Very much appreciate that. And second question was more for clarification. So slide fourteen of the staff presentation talked, the condition number twenty-two mentioned construction day and time. But just for clarification, there's no construction or new erection, correct? It's really for removal of new facilities. So instead, it's just the limited backfill to return to original condition, but there's not, no construction. It, it, it's in fact removable, right?
That's correct. So we would be removing all the equipment within the fence Mandalay two twenty K V substation area. We would be leaving, removing just the above ground, leaving the gravel that's currently there. And then we would be removing seventeen wood poles in one tubular steel pole, and then the associated electrical conductor and anchor wires that are attached to those poles. So it's all removal.
Great. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Thank you, Chair Chavez. Um, is, is this sort of like the first step, maybe decode, decommissioning the rest of the power plants around here? Or is this just one at a time? Or is there some, some sort of a strategy from the city at this point?
Commissioners, if that question was directed at county, at city staff, these are not our power plants to necessarily decommission is what the starting answer would be. So we would be looking at the owners of the facilities, and in some ways, they're directed by the C P U C, the California Public Utilities Commission, as far as how these are going to operate long term. As members of the Edison team have already shared with us, though, they're taking the lead on taking facilities out, which is indicating where things might be going. And I think that's the most that staff could say at this point in time. We do look to the applicant team to see if they have any additional comments to provide to that question.
Um, I don't really have much to add, you know, other than the customer Genon had an existing agreement with Southern California Edison to provide service through that substation and have terminated that and asked us to remove the facility. So it, it does seem like it's an indicator that they would be in, starting the process of retirement. But I can't speak for the customer. I can simply say that at this time, S E was only serving that customer. And so we're, without any reason to keep the substation operational, it's in our best interest to remove all the facilities.
Thank you.
Any additional questions from commissioners? Ms. Cuivas, I'll just, this is more clarification and for any member of the public that just so happened to jump on right now, that SoCal Edison has no ownership over the generation station that's there. If you can just respond with the yes or no in regards to that.
Yes, that's correct. Our ownership is limited to the electrical substation and the electrical lines that fed the generating station.
And again, just for clarification purposes, that there is no plans for any new development is just simply restoring the land back to its original state. And that the only one customer that this subdivision actually provided power to was to the generation station, correct?
That's correct.
Awesome. Thank you. Madam Sec, Madam Secretary, just to confirm, we do not have any public comments on this item or did any come in last minute?
Um, correct. There's, there's no public comment for this item.
Okay, and there was no written communication about it, right?
Right. That's correct.
Thank you. Commissioner Nash?
I'm ready to make a motion if our deliberation has concluded.
That was just questionings if, if there's no deliberation from any of the commissioners. A quick pause here. None? Go ahead, Commissioner Nash.
I move that we approve the staff recommendation to find the project to be categorically exempt from environmental review pursuant to CEQA guidelines and adopt resolution two thousand and twenty-one dash X X, approving planning and zoning permit number twenty dash four hundred dash zero four, subject to, subject to certain findings and conditions, and that we omit condition number eighteen, and I think that covers everything.
You said without condition eighteen, right? I'm sorry if I missed that.
That we omit condition number eighteen, yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Dr. Lopez?
A second.
Okay, so it's been moved a second that the Southern California Edison Mandalay Substation Planning and zoning permit number twenty dash four hundred dash zero four coastal development permit be approved as recommended by staff with the subtraction of condition of approval number eighteen. Is there any deliberation on the motion? Seeing and hearing none. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Commissioner Nash?
Hi.
Commissioner Lopez?
Hi.
Commissioner Connolly?
Hi.
Commissioner Meyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ojo?
Hi.
Chair Chavez?
Hi.
Motion passes.
Thank you, and congratulations to SoCal Edison.
Thank you.
So we'll now move into our next item, which is study sessions and reports. There is nothing listed, so we'll now move into planning commission business. It's an opportunity for commissioners to provide any comments. Commissioner Meyer?
Thank you, Chair Chavez. I was reminded as I looked at our packet of the standing condition, for example, with condition number twenty-two in this case, the condition of construction days and times. And it says that construction activities to occur between the hours of seven A M. and six P M. Monday through Saturday. And I believe from my experience that that is the standard days and times that the city has laid forth for construction. So I bring this up because I find, I found when I was living right around construction for quite a while, probably two years, maybe year and a half, that construction starting at seven A M. on a Saturday nearby one's home, I understand this, in this case, this is not residential, but in many cases it is residential, is to my mind somewhat egregious. I don't think everyone plans or expects to have to be woken up by loud noises in their neighborhood at seven A M. So I, I suppose at this point I would like to, I don't know if it would be to make a motion to add that to our agenda, our future agenda, or maybe clarification from staff as to where that might fit in terms of what our responsibilities and authority is.
Chair, Chair Meyer, I'm sorry, Chair Chavez, Commissioner Meyer, members of the rest of the commission. I'll be brief because this isn't an agendized item, but where it ultimately comes from is the Oxnard City Code. Those are the construction hours that are established as the maximum construction hours. As the planning commission considers projects, you, it's your discretionary body, so you can look at modifying conditions, provided they're not in conflict with the Oxnard City Code, which means you could go to lesser hours if you so desired. So essentially, the code identifies maximum, you can go smaller than that. Ultimately, if the planning commission got into that sort of discussion for a project, the trade-off that you're basically looking at is if you restrict the number of hours in a given day or even days, then the length of time to implement a project grows. So, you know, what, what's, what's the preference essentially, or what's the sensitivity to a particular community? Is the general rhetorical question that the planning commission can consider on a case-by-case basis is what we would generally say for you to consider. My recommendation is that we don't need to necessarily bring this back as a, a high-level conversation for the whole planning mission, because you already have the power to consider that on a individual case-by-case. a high level conversation for the whole planning mission, because you already have the power to consider that on a individual case by case basis as you see projects.
Thank you, Mr. Colwitt. So what you'd be saying then is, on a case by case basis, we would have the authority to propose a change in the hours, like say, for example, in this case, I would say, well, I would propose that it would be more reasonable to start construction on a Saturday at nine o'clock AM in any area that's within a residential range versus seven AM, for example, but that would only be on a case by case basis, and we'd need to put forward that as proposal each time.
In short, yes. And you'd have to convince at least four members of the planning commission to vote for such a thing is what we would say. We'd also seek the applicant's buy in as well, because if the, if something is approved, an applicant always has the ability to appeal a decision for whichever reason and can bring it to a different, to a higher decision maker. So there's a conversation to have, to be had if we're going to be doing something that's more restrictive.
I see. So where might be the most appropriate venue for this discussion? Would it be more appropriate for city council? For if there was a consideration to alter the code?
The the short answer is ultimately yes. And there are a couple of different ways that that can be done. And again, I'm going to be trying to be brief here because this isn't on the agenda explicitly. But the planning commission could actually to bring this up on their own and then make a suggestion up the councils is a one venue. That staff had already would go back to the point and saying, because it's already in the code, you already have the ability to condition projects accordingly. That's probably the most effective way of implementing change.
Okay. Yeah, I guess that's that's helpful. I just imagine I may, and maybe it's not a concern for other people in the same way that I found it to be a challenging situation for me, or maybe it's not for others. But I do find it curious, and I know that I found it very challenging to be around seven AM Saturday construction around my home. So, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Vice Chair Rocco.
Thank you, Chair Chavez. I wanted to ask staff in regards to the conflict of interest maps that I assume were distributed out to all my other fellow commissioners and myself. I understand more or less the conflict of interests that are put on us in regards to within the meetings. I'd like to ask just in the public sphere, what can or should we do or is recommended if people ask us about those areas within the public, within the conflict of interest outside of a meeting? I have two messages from people who are questioning or asking about properties within my conflict of interest, and I'd like to know what I can and is recommended to say.
Chair Chavez and members of the the planning commission. If there was a project that was pending before the the planning commission on an item and it's within the five hundred foot radius, then you should politely decline to engage with them. If it is a general discussion from one of your neighbors and the item was not pending before the planning commission. You, of course, are welcome to dialogue and speak with your neighbors, but to avoid the appearance of impropriety, if it is a pending matter and it's within that five hundred feet, then we would recommend you politely decline to engage about that project.
Thank you, attorney. That answers most of my question. Obviously, I have some specifics, but I'll take it out of this meeting for the time being. So thank you for that comment.
And one additional comment, all members of the planning commission did receive conflict of interest maps. Just to make sure that everyone is in the know about which projects may be of an issue for them. And if there are any questions about those, definitely reach out to staff. We can, we can help you with those again as we're looking at individual projects.
Thank you, staff. Is there any further comments? I'll just make a few. This Saturday is the thirtieth annual Juneteenth event. It will be held virtually once again in regards to COVID. So if you're interested in participating virtually in that event, I suggest you visit the website juneteenthoxnar.org. There you can get some additional information in regards to the event and how to participate. Again, that's Saturday, June nineteenth. Piggybacking off of that, I want to just acknowledge a huge win in regards to Juneteenth being recognized now as a federal holiday. As was mentioned by chairs of Juneteenth, Julia Allen Dickinson and Angela Mitchell Landers that spoke at the Ventura County Board of Supervisors meeting that Juneteenth is recognized essentially as the Independence Day for African American individuals, and it is held extremely dear to them. So this is definitely a huge win and a great recognition to be taking place to be now recognized as a federal holiday. In my final comments, I'll just say happy Father's Day to all the fathers. It is this Sunday, June twentieth. So if kids, if you're watching, be sure to make breakfast or something. Unfortunately, I won't get that. I only have a three and a five year old, and we don't encourage them to mess with the stove. But happy Father's Day to all the fathers out there. And we'll go to Commissioner Meyer.
Thank you, Chair Chavez. In light of updates to celebrate, I wanted to acknowledge that California officially reopened on June fifteenth. And I hope that all of you and everybody watching and engaged is proud of that fact and all of our efforts and sacrifice to get us to this point. And also aware of what that does mean, whether you're vaccinated or whether you're non vaccinated in various circumstances. And to make sure to review what it exactly does mean on the state's website, covid nineteen dot ca.gov.
Thank you for that, Commissioner Meyer. If there's no further comments from the commission, we'll go ahead and move into community development staff updates. Mr. Colwitts.
Thank you, Chair Chavez. Only two really brief notices for you. First and foremost, and piggybacking on Commissioner Meyer's comments, City Hall did reopen this week. So we are open in the mornings only from eight to noon. Masks are required for folks that are coming into city facilities. Social distancing is still being enforced as well within this city hall. We still are encouraging as many online and electronic communications and meetings as possible. But we're trying to essentially have a hybrid approach here as we're collectively experiencing the reopening. But it was a big day and it's frankly, it's been nice to have human interaction again. And I'm assuming all of you are experiencing the same thing. And I'm happy to report that so far the reopening has been smooth for us. And people are respecting the rules that we set forth. So we'll keep our fingers crossed that that continues to happen and good behavior paves its way for more rewards for all of us. So that's great. The only other thing to report is we will be having another meeting two weeks from now. So just now that that's on the docket. So with that, I will cede my time to to the chair.
Thank you, Mr. Colwitts. So since there's no further business, if there's no objection to adjourning. Commissioner Dr. Lopez. You're on mute.
Thank you. Quick question, if I may. Mr. Colwitts, our packets had two memos, one dated June tenth from you in regards to the rules and procedures subcommittee, and then one by our vice chair dated June seventeenth. Can we get a brief update on 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 those? I saw that one of them had a resolution offered by the chair with a pending date. But was that just for information and update purposes for us, or is there any update?
I'll be brief, but essentially the memos were to transmit the proposed edits to members of the subcommittees and to, sorry, members of the subcommittee and to make it publicly available for anyone who is watching from from home or any other means for that matter. There has not been an official motion one way or another by the subcommittee members to bring things back before the full commission. We're still going to go through that process through the subcommittee meeting and then report back out to the full planning commission as a whole. So at this point in time, it's essentially just being as transparent as possible, if you will, with with more work to come.
Thank you. Very much appreciated.
Welcome.
Vice Chair Rocco.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to provide a partial explanation as chair of the subcommittee. I requested my fellow subcommittee members to provide any edits in any way, shape or form that they felt most comfortable in discussing possible revision to the bylaws. And so in regards to the date, I'm, it's common for me or was common for me to date it as to the meeting for the memo. So I apologize to any of the public or my other fellow commissioners on the full planning commission that that wasn't explained really well, but if anything, we could provide small updates during this time and the future also too. But I'll leave that up to the chair. But I just wanted to provide my input as chair of the subcommittee. Thank you.
Okay. So we'll go ahead and again, if there, there's no further business and if there's no objection to Commissioner Meyer.
Thank you, Chair Chavez. In regard to the mention of the conflict of interest map, I did not notice receiving a hard copy and the last email I noticed in relation to it was stating that the staff were working on it, and that was about a month ago. Am I missing a finished product of conflict of interest map that I should have?
Commissioners as a whole, the maps that we provided to you electronically are the the final product, if you will. We can put them in your packets for this next go around if if the hard copy is desired. And if everyone wants to, just give me a quick, you know, head nod or thumbs up, we'll follow suit. Again, I'm seeing it all the way around, so we'll do that with this next packet. The electronic medium was the quickest way for us to get it to you. So that's why the email and you're going out, but we'll get hard copy to each of you individually. We won't share each other's with one another, but you'll have your own individualized one.
Oh, well, Mr. Colwitts, I didn't notice receiving one electronically. And so that's, that's actually why I'm asking. When, when, do you know when that was sent out? Whereabouts?
I don't remember the exact date, but it was recently. The days have kind of blended, and I don't know if one of our commissioners knows the exact date. I could also, after this meeting, forward the email out to you. The intent was to send an individual email to each of you.
Okay. And would that have been from Dee?
From me.
From you. Okay. All right. Thank you. Yeah, please do. And I'll also look. Search for emails from you. Thank you very much.
Okay. Are there any further comments from commissioners from Mr. Colwitts or anything else that they want to discuss? Seeing and hearing none. If there's no objection to adjourning, we'll be adjourned to our Thursday, July first, twenty twenty one, regular meeting at six PM. As a reminder, we'll be moving into the rules and procedures committee, subcommittee. I will ask that we take a three minute recess as we transition, so we'll return back at six forty three. Thank you, commissioners, for all your hard work, and it's an opportunity for staff to transition to our subcommittee. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. All take care.
Thank you.
Bye, everybody. Good night.
Okay, uh, thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Oxnard Planning Commission Rules and Procedures Bylaws Subcommittee for Thursday, June 17, 2021. This meeting will come to order at 6:44 PM. Per the Governor's Executive Order N-29-20, some members of the Planning Commission Bylaws Subcommittee and staff will be participating via teleconference. The public may provide comments to the Planning Commission Bylaws Subcommittee via email at planning@oxnar.org, no later than 3:00 PM on the day of the meeting or through the city's website or call the Planning Division's office. I will request that we continue our technological courtesies from the full planning commission under Chair Chavez to use the raise hand feature when requesting to speak and to put the hand down when called to or immediately after speaking. For simplicity, we will continue using our titles from the full planning commission. Because the meeting is electronic, all votes, if any, will be recorded by roll call. Madam Secretary, can we please have the roll call?
Chair Chavez.
Here.
Vice Chair Oweho.
Here.
Commissioner Connolly.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Even though not listed on the agenda as distributed, Madam Secretary, were there any speakers for public comments?
No, there are none.
Thank you very much. We will now move on to Agenda Item B1, Study Sessions Reports Regarding Rules and Procedures Bylaws of the Planning Commission. This Planning Commission Rules and Procedures Subcommittee will review and suggest revisions to the rules and procedures of the Planning Commission in preparation of reporting its findings and recommendations to the Planning Commission. Are there any comments or further recommendations from the city staff in regard to this agenda item before the subcommittee goes into a discussion?
Hello, Chair, Vice Chair Oweho. So city staff primarily, we're going to take kind of a backseat, if you will, and let the subcommittee members have have the discussion about proposed edits and what you're thinking about one way or another. If we think we need to interject for one reason or another, we will do so, but we're going to try to be backseat passengers, if you will, rather than backseat drivers. The one thing just to keep in to be aware of is as we move forward and we get more of a final product that's coming out of the subcommittee, we're going to eventually compare, compare the subcommittee recommendations to the city councils procedures, if you will, just to make sure that they're generally in alignment with one another is the the overall goal. And with that, those are all of my comments and I'm looking over my counterpart, Mr. Ken Rosell, see if he has any other comments to provide to you.
Yes, yes, thank you, Mr. Colwitz. In reviewing the the draft comments, there were a couple different sections that that with the vice chair's indulgence, I will provide comment on. There's a couple of changes that I would recommend be made and there's a couple of other items that just a little a little dialogue back and forth, but overall these are are very good comments and of course, it's up to the subcommittee to determine what they want to recommend.
Thank you, Mr. Rosell. Would you like to make those comments now or as we go through our suggested edits?
It is up to you, Vice Chair, when you would like. I have just a couple sets of comments. I'm happy to do it now, or if you'd like to wait as you go along, it is it is your call.
Okay, thank you. With that, I think we will wait until the appropriate section, but please do interject when those comments are most relevant, whatever section that we are discussing about. Thank you. So again, thank you, Mr. Colwitz and Mr. Rosell for your comments and recommendations. Based on our discussions at the previous meeting and the materials submitted for this meeting, we are going to continue using informal consideration in regard to our debate and our discussion, which removes the cap on how many times we can talk about any subject. Additionally, if there is no objection, we are going to be a little bit flexible in terms of the order of how we discuss the items in regards to the materials that were submitted. There were some changes of the sections from what we currently have, some switching, some additional sections, and so we are going to keep it a little bit loose for this meeting. And so right now, I invite my fellow commissioners if they want to make some general comments. And then I'm going to ask if you have any recommendations in regards to how we want to discuss, and I have my own two, but I'll leave it up to you to to say anything right now. Yes, Chair Chavez.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Just a quick couple of comments that I appreciate your recommendations. A lot of information to to go through, but very good insights as to how to be a little bit more efficient. I will just recommend that we do section by section as not all sections were covered. It was a lot of skipping over certain sections that appeared to be okay and then just a lot of reordering of sections. But it would be my recommendation just to go section by section. And it would also be beneficial to determine the type of format that we use when constructing the bylaws. Compared to our original one, how that one was laid out to the one that I had proposed. And it would be very interesting to see that. I don't recall what the city councils bylaws or rules and procedures, how their layout is, but I believe we need to construct a layout that's easy to read and easy to go through versus trying to search through everything. But other than that, I am very excited to tackle this as we have two documents here that are suggesting changes. And with that, I'll end my comments. Thank you, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Chair Chavez. Commissioner Connolly.
Yes, I appreciate both of your organization and your notes. Mine are a little less organized. I keep my notes on a marker board. I write things down. I highlight them. So thank you so much for for your memos. Much appreciated. And I think I do agree going section by section and just noting changes will be good. And I can go through my notes at that time.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Connolly. My general comments in regards to how we're going to be discussing is, yes, I do agree from our previous meeting to go section by section. It does appear that at least from the materials submitted, there are a little bit of switcheroo's in regards to how the sections are reconstituted. And so if there is no objection, I'm going to default to Chair Chavez's ordering of sections. It is mostly in the order that we have the current resolution. However, I have notes in regards to where there are some insertions or some switches of the sections. And so I believe that is, it feels the simplest. And so if there's no objections, I'm going to go with that right now.
Sure, sounds good.
Chair Chavez.
Yeah, Vice Chair, just a quick question for our staff. If they are going to be taking notes or following along with our suggestions when we make them? Or if they want one of us to be keeping a tally as far as the formatting and, you know, addition, subtractions and changes?
Thank you, Chair Chavez. For the staff, I don't want to just say that I will do it if the staff is better prepared to make notes. But in your opinion, staff, would it be best for the secretary to take any notes of possible amendments? Or should one of us, and meaning me, take notes and bring it to the next meeting in regards to our comments?
Subcommittee members, staff will be taking notes. That's that's something that we can do, but a finished product, the best way to get there. One of the things that we did talk with Chair Chavez about once upon a time was actually sharing his screen and showing real life edits to members of the public who might not be able to see things at home. So if if Chair Chavez is interested in doing that or able to do that, you know, we didn't beta test that fully. But we can try that at this point in time if that would be of the interest of the subcommittee. That would probably be the most transparent way of doing this.
Thank you, Mr. Colwitz. I going to offer that to Chair Chavez and how comfortable you feel. I know that's going to take some energy away in regards to the debate and or discussion. Would you like to do a trial for this first role and see how it goes?
Yes, Vice Chair, I will go ahead and share my screen and, you know, and put the changes as we see fit. Mind you, to my colleagues is that the format that will be used is the one that I had submitted. And of course, after we change it, depending on the format that we choose, it will be there available. It will also give an opportunity, because our copies weren't in color, to actually see where I made my changes at. And so I will be more than happy to go ahead and take on that that role tonight. If it becomes a little too overwhelming, I will go ahead and voice my concerns about that.
Thank you. We'll just do a check in after each role. I think that'll be good. Obviously, you can let us know more ahead of time in case it gets a little bit too unreal to you.
Real quick, Vice Chair. Did you want me to share the screen or not?
Yes, I think at this time, please do share your screen and focus it on rule one for right now. As he's getting that ready for members of the staff and the public, we are looking at the proposed edits first of Chair Chavez and will be going back and forth with all members of the subcommittee and staff if they have any recommendations or insertions that they would like to provide. At this time, we are likely not making motions and discussing and just doing informal considerations at this time. For now, I'd like to default to Chair Chavez to just do an explanation of, I think it's okay to go by part. So we'll in general do whatever role and then part A, B, C, one by one. I have a couple of notes of where my edits are either in conflict, overlap with you, or have none or no difference. And so again, we'll keep it loose, but I'll just have you explain rule one, part A.
Yes, Vice Chair, as shown on the screen in red, we have rule one, Section A, as reading the rules of the Planning Commission of the City of Oxnard here and after, as rules referred to as the commission, adopt the following rules and procedures to govern and conduct of its meetings. That is in addition compared to what our our original rules were. And as you can see in red, each sub, for Section C, it says each subcommittee is a part of the commission and it is subject to the commission's authority and direction and its rules. And this instance, when we move into subcommittees in the future, it's just pretty much stating that the rules that we follow and the guidelines will be very mirrored to what the full body of the commission has. And as you see, Section B, it was untouched as I felt that it was appropriate to remain in place. And those are the comments on that.
Thank you, Commissioner Connolly.
I had notes on B. At the beginning of my term was when the city council approved that all of us received the copy of the Roberts Rules of Order book. So I'm wondering if that's going to, if when we get new members that that's going to continue? And if that would be placed, I had in my notes to place the Roberts rules under Section B and getting a copy of the bylaws as well as some kind of overview on the Brown Act. At the beginning of the appointment.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Connolly. I'll bring the question up to staff that I know that in Measure M in regards to the city council, Roberts Rules of Order books, if I'm not mistaken, we're supposed to be given to them in addition to a presentation. Does that automatically apply to citizen advisory groups, which includes the planning commission? And I'm just posing the question to know if we should repetitively put it in ours or we should just do it anyways in case Measure M is repealed?
Upon appointment was my, was kind of where I was adding that, because I know all of that happened at the same time.
So Vice Chair Oweho, this would apply the requirement to to give a copy of Roberts Rules of Order to each new member of the commission would apply, but there is, staff would have no issue with you adding that that language in what would become Rule 1B.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rosell. For my comments, and obviously we can go back and forth. I'll start with Commissioner Connolly's in regards to the Roberts Rules of Order and the Brown Act. I know that we have another section in regards to Roberts rules. And so I'm going to propose that we add that we receive the Roberts Rules of Order newly revised advice book in that section. Or it could be in this. And so I tend to agree that there should be that. And in regards to the Brown Act, I don't know if either me or Chair Chavez put that anywhere that we should receive a presentation regarding it. And so that sounds like a good recommendation to put in the appropriate Brown Act section that we have somewhere else in our bylaws. Yes, Commissioner Connolly, no worries.
I took the, we're casual a little too far. I talk a lot. I took the League of California Cities course online and I'm not sure if you all did that as well or if that's something that is include, if it was just an option that was given to me or if that's kind of like a requirement, but that seems like a general provision to me. I put that in my notes as well as the ethics form that we, the ethics training and the ethics form that we had to do. It seems like that would be a general provision for all members.
Thank you.
Staff will jump in here really quick. Training for planning commissioners, it's not a requirement per the state. It's definitely something that we suggest and we encourage and try to make available. There are many different provisions. The League of Cities is one, APA locally is another. There may be others that pop up as time goes on. So the general question, if if the planning commission wants to put in language about training into the bylaws, you know, encouraging and other words like that would be the general recommendation that we would have. We would suggest that we don't name drop a particular group that would provide training because I just, it's it's fluid and it might change as time goes on. In terms of state requirements, there are requirements for ethics trainings and and Form 700s, your your economics interest statements. Some of those things just need to happen as in the role that you have. So there's a difference between the requirements and the recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Colwitz, Chair Chavez.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I am leaning to Commissioner Connolly's comments in regards to a general provision. I have no problem with the proposal from you yourself, Vice Chair, in regards to you know, ultimately number B and adding that we provide copies of the Brown Act, whether it's even like a short presentation that the, I know the city attorney's office does from time to time as well as a copy of the book from Roberts rules. And maybe part of that section, I don't know if that would be the appropriate section to say that we have encouraged training. But I think in that section would be appropriate to have that they receive the rules and procedures of the commission as well as the Roberts rules and the Brown Act. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Chavez, and I'm leaning towards your comments too in adding it into the general provisions about receiving a copy of Roberts Rules of Order and some type of presentation in regards to the Brown Act. And it would probably be appropriate for adding it on to be or in another subpoint after B. You don't have to make that decision now, but at least it's said right now so that we can come back to it. At this time, I'm going to go back and go through Chair Chavez's comments in regards to part A. I also had something similar in my amendment number 20. I also had something similar in my Amendment Number 24 that there should just be some type of formal naming convention for the body that we would put after. It's more for me personally, it's more for formality's sake. And so I am, I'm neutral in whether it's gonna be Chair Chavez's or my own Amendment 24. So I'd just like to have that stated that I would like, that I'll vote for either one to be put somewhere, either as a new rule or in the general provision. In regards to Part B, I had my Amendment 1, that when the rules that I add, that it would say upon appointment and when the rules and procedures are amended, each member of the commission shall receive a copy of these rules and procedures. And my reason was that sometimes they're not amended as frequently and some people just forget what's in the rules. And so just adds one more time for us to remember or to review the rules. And in regards to Part C, I have nothing in regards to that section. And I tend to agree with Part C, adding that section. And it was a little ambiguous to me whether the subcommittee was going to take the rules of the commission and this just makes it clear. At this time, are there any comments right now as I try to formulate an action that I'm going to recommend?
I think in just reviewing both Point A and then your revision on 24, they're almost identical. So I don't, I don't think that that would need much discussion. It would just be technicalities. So whatever, for ease of reading, whatever the best wording would be, but they basically say the same thing.
Thank you, Commissioner Connelly.
Vice Chair, I'll just suggest that for B, under the general provisions, that we would go with your layout as far as the wording, but also add along with Brown Act training and the Roberts Rules of Orders book or information. That would just be my recommendation for that. Because I believe the way that you worded it, that, you know, when they join the commission and then when the rules and procedures are amended, that everybody receives that updated copy right away.
Thank you for coming, Chair Chavez. And in regards to that, I would like to agree with you in regards to putting my amendment in regards to your Part B. But then we're, I would like to propose that we would add, at least right now for discussion sake, Commissioner Connelly's suggestion to in regards to the Roberts Rules of Order newly revised books to be sent to all the planning commission members upon their appointment. And a Brown Act presentation, maybe as another section or another part presentation at the beginning of each year or some regular cycle. But I'll let you continue or finish up the revision of Part B. Ending any other further comments right now.
So just to confirm with both yourself and Commissioner Connelly that we are okay with going with the proposal from the Vice Chair and adding Roberts Rules of Order as well as a training of the Brown Act? Is that what I'm understanding?
This is how I would structure it. I would say upon appointment, pollin. And then, one, each member receives a copy of these rules and procedures. Two, each member receives a copy of the latest edition of Roberts Rules of Orders. Three, each member has the opportunity to participate in some sort of training, you know, with better words than that. And four, has access to a formal introduction to the Brown Act. Or formal overview, sorry.
Chair Chavez, I'll let Commissioner Connelly repeat that as needed for you. In general, I basically agree with all the comments. However, I'll suggest later in regards to moving one of the sections maybe to another part of the rules. But I think right now it'd be good to just have it typed. Thank you for that. And while you're typing that, I'd just like to reiterate that these are not formal motions right now. These are recommendations. Obviously, we'll go through a formal motion to bring up whatever bylaws proposal to the full planning commission. And just as advance notice, we will likely be amending or approving each section by sereatum, which just means that we approve each section as we go along and then the whole thing. So just review that in the future. But right now, it's mostly informal consideration.
Vice Chair and Commissioner Connelly, if you guys can just take a quick look and see if I hit all the points or if something needs to be changed. I understand this isn't the final product, but I want to make sure that we capture everything that was stated already.
Sounds like what we discussed to me.
Okay.
Yeah, Chair Chavez, if you could just make a note in parentheses somewhere after in Part A, well, Part B dash A, something about the rules that commissioners receive also when the rules and procedures are amended. I'm not sure if another point should be made in regards to that, but I'd just like to note that I would like to recommend that we receive the rules and procedures upon appointment and upon revision.
I think it would probably be good to add maybe B dash D as it, unless you want it actually in the title upon appointment, that we just put parentheses with it.
If there's an objection from Commissioner Connelly, I'm good with your first suggestion in regards to it concerning that.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to find the spot, I thought just off the top of my head where it could go would be when we talk about new officers joining. I'm trying to see, that's just in my head where I feel like that would go.
Thank you, Commissioner Connelly. The, my only, what was that, pushback on that is that even though it would be upon appointment, it wouldn't be upon amendment unless you were suggesting we also add that too.
Oh, yeah. Okay. No, I see. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay.
And at least for me right now, I'm good with at least all that text for Rule 1 as we've just amended it. Obviously, we can restructure it and move them to other sections. But for me, I'm good with how Rule 1 text is looking. I'm gonna look for any other further comments or objections before I move on to Rule 2. Yes, Commissioner Connelly.
So I feel like term limits weren't really discussed in the bylaws and that sounds like a general provision to me to clarify the, the term commitment and limits.
Yes, thank you for that comment, Commissioner Connelly. I actually proposed that in my extremely voluminous Amendment 17D. And so at this time, if there's an objection, I'm going to wait till we get to the election of officers for that.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Connelly. Chair Chavez, I know that you're doing the typing. Do you have any further comments or objections for the time being in regards to Rule 1 as you've just amended it?
No, I believe the text is appropriate. I would just ask if staff had any comments in regards to the Rule 1. If not, then I believe we can move to Rule 2.
Thank you, Chair, for that. And with that, would staff like to interject or add something at this time? Again, we can go over any general objections or specific later. But of course, we would gladly appreciate any now.
Staff doesn't have any objections at all to what's being proposed, but we do have a slight suggestion perhaps for clarity. Looking at Rule 1, Subpart B, Subpart D, we don't think that we need a separate Subpart D. Rather, if B, Subpart A, was ended where it says, shall receive a copy of these rules and procedures, comma, and upon amendment thereof, you know, something like that. Because that, Subpart A is talking about the rules and procedures. Separating into two different lines might cause confusion.
Thank you, Mr. Powitz. And there's some objections from my fellow subcommittee members. I agree with that recommendation and I see that Chair Chavez is putting that in. Thank you very much for that quick revision there. Again, my comments are if there's no further general comments or objections, we will move on to Rule 2 at this time. Seeing none, thank you again, Chair Chavez, for moving to Rule 2. We'll focus on the section calling of meetings. And I'll start if you are okay with it, Chair Chavez. I mean, if you could start, Chair Chavez, in regards to any comments you had for calling of meetings, subsection of meetings.
Yes, Vice Chair, as shown on the screen, the only addition to Rule 2 was notice for meetings. Other, other than that, it's just, just kinda getting us, and I understand that our staff already does compliance with the sunshine ordinance, but this is just putting it in there. It may be a little redundant, but I felt that it was necessary. Other than that, I didn't really have many changes for Rule 2.
Okay, thank you, Chair Chavez. Commissioner Connelly, we can, if you'd like to make a comment now, or we can wait until after my comments.
Oh, you can, go ahead, go ahead. I'll go after you.
Thank you very much. So looking at Rule 2 meetings, I'm gonna look and focus your attention to the subsection calling of meetings. In regards to Section A, the sentence starting that commission, I refer you to my Amendment 2. I am basically adding flexibility in that Part A that we are able to meet via technological means. And I'm also adding a provision in regards to holidays. I know that this year that no meeting falls on a holiday, but I just like something more formulaic so that it's not set arbitrarily or perceived to be. And so those are my comments just in Part A. I'm gonna stay the rest of my comments for this section, because I have a couple more amendments in regards to Amendment, my Amendment 3. I propose deleting that Part B. I have never had a agenda review meeting and so I know I'm on the younger side in regards to planning commission. And I'm not sure that I would like that possibility. And so I am just proposing it at this time and that's my personal preference in regards to that. In regards to my Amendment 4, I'm adding a section in regards to meeting cancellation or rescheduling. I believe there are times where it might be advisable or necessary. And I don't see how we're able to do it right now. That doesn't appear or could appear to be arbitrary. And so just putting it in the bylaws will make it more, or at least seem more objective. And so those are my comments in regards to all of Rule 2. I can follow up later, but I just wanted to give a brief overview. Commissioner Connelly.
That was, my comment was similar. I noticed that both Chair Reho and Chair Chavez comment or talked about the agenda review meetings. I obvious, I personally have never attended an agenda review meeting. I would have liked to in the very beginning. I think it would have been helpful. And I think, I don't know, I think we should just have a discussion whether to, to omit it or to leave it as an option. If, say, as long as I've been here, we've had fairly short meetings and short agendas. If we had a longer agenda, maybe an agenda review meeting would be called for.
Thank you, Commissioner Connelly. Chair Chavez.
Thank you, Vice Chair. It has always been puzzling to me, even before joining the commission, of having an agenda review meeting prior to the actual meeting. But as someone who sits on multiple commissions, for MetroLink, before our committee meetings, not our regular meeting, but our committee meetings, we do have a, a quick review of the items. Staff just gives a quick summary, like a one or two minute summary of the item and is available to answer any questions. I do know in past years' practices, the agenda used to be read out loud during the commission meeting and that it's not the case anymore. So do I believe it's necessary? Not really. But it is a good, for, a good topic to discuss if we want to keep it or as Commissioner Connelly mentioned, omitted, to change it up a little bit. Those are my comments, Chair, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Chair Chavez. I'd like to propose right now, let's just focus on the Part A sentence with the commission shall regularly meet in regards to my Amendment 2. And I'd just like to know if there's any general comments in regards to the technological flexibility. I'm trying to add, with or without a governor or a county order. And in regards to a little bit more formulaic way to reschedule meeting if it falls on a holiday. Any general comments or specific? Now I'm just gonna go in order through Rule 2.
I totally agree with you. I, that was one thing that I was really excited to discuss in the subcommittee was having the option for teleconferencing. I wonder, staff, what it looks like on your end? When you're in city council chambers, do you have a screen that has all of our faces? So when we're there, it would be kinda like we'd be able to see everyone? Or are you just able to, to see us on, on your computer screens?
At this point in time, we can see you on, on the screen. If I could, though, raise a legal issue. At this point in time, because of the emergency orders, you are allowed to, to meet remotely. We anticipate that the Brown Act will be changed to allow this going forward, but at this point in time, the Brown Act as currently drafted does not allow these remote meetings. So we may want to consider if we want to add this language without knowing what the, the parameters of the Brown Act will be post-pandemic. So I just wanted to, to raise that issue.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Rosell, for that. Just looking right now at that technological flexibility portion of the amendment, I'd like to propose two options to my fellow subcommittee members to add a provision that it will come into effect if this, if state law allows it or just remove that part of the amendment, of my amendment right now. or just remove that part of the amendment of my amendment right now.
I would say, I would say just add the verbiage and then put it maybe in italics or something. And to just table that topic until, I mean, I'm not sure if we're going to know if the Brown Act is going to be amended by the time that we conclude reviewing our bylaws. But I think just to have the notes in there to discuss towards the end of this final draft would be, it would be good to put it in there.
Thank you, Commissioner Connolly. Chair Chavez, I'll go to you even though you're not raising your hand.
Yeah. Here's my only thing. With the Brown Act and Mr. Rosell, you can correct me if I'm wrong. When we were in simpler times, I should start off. The Brown Act allowed individuals, not the full commission, but allowed individuals to essentially teleconference. The only stipulations was that they had to list a location that the public was able to access in the event that they were not participating in person. My problem with adding that language now, because the, we plan on having the rules and procedures reviewed every so often that I believe that would be the appropriate time. And because there's already language in the bylaws and I don't believe they change in either myself or yours, Vice Chair, proposals that with the majority, we can bring the bylaws back to amend them. So that's my comments in regards that I don't believe it's necessary at this time until we get some direction from our legal team and to kind of see where the state goes for. I know there's a lot of talks for the video conferencing to continue, to have members present and not present. But again, the Brown Act already has language that says people can participate, just not the majority of the people, but they can participate. They just have to have the accessibility for the public. And I'm assuming that if the Brown Act gets amended on the state level, that that portion may continue to stay though, that people of the public can essentially show up to your hotel room if they wanted to, to participate in the meeting. I don't know if it's ever occurred, but I'm pretty sure that's an option. Those are my comments. And again, if I misspoke or didn't clear it right, if Mr. Rosell can just jump in and just thumbs up or thumbs down on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Chavez. If there are no comments from staff, but please do butt in. I will make my comments to. At this time, I would like to push to add it in, but I understand the concerns of Chair Chavez. And so we can skip deciding whether to put this in or not at this time and come back to it after we review the bylaws. That's my second.
So Ken and I have chatted quickly. We think that there could be some general language that's put in that talks about telecommunications as provided by the Brown Act. And you just leave it somewhat open-ended. That would mean that we would not have to revise your bylaws if state law changes. And in the meantime, we would be complying with the regulations that are out there already. So a simple edit like that might get you where you're collectively trying to go and where we're collectively forecasting we may go without having a huge work effort in the future to redo the bylaws. So that's one quick comment to consider. There is also some comments about deleting the review of the agenda language. Staff would support that. We think the review of the agenda and that conversation process lends itself potentially to Brown Act issues and/or the need to post other agendas and noticing for the actual agenda review itself. So we think that complicates things in a way that it doesn't need to be complicated.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Kowit. And obviously with the assistance of Mr. Rosell. I'll just focus right now on your part A. Obviously, comment on your part B comments. In regards to part A, I recommend making that addition slash edit to allow whatever that verbiage was in regards to technological flexibility. We don't have to put the exact language at this time, but just add at the end of part A.
Like participants may exercise the option via teleconference in agreement with the Brown Act, something general like that.
We think you could even maybe go broader and just simply do, and as may be allowed by state law, an executive order, for instance, would be covered under provisions of the governor who instituted the change, if you will. So that just gives you a very broad parameter without necessarily even having to name drop the Brown Act itself.
That's fair.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Kowit. Chair Chavez, let's add, again, some assistance from anyone else, staff or members. Let's add to the end of that sentence and as may be allowed by state law. Yes, I think that allows additional areas, not even physically in city council. It could be anywhere in Oxnard in addition to technological. So actually it probably is even more flexible than my original amendment two. Any comments from my Commissioner Connolly or Chair Chavez?
I have two things. Just I think first and third are supposed to be numerical. And then discussing holidays too, like you mentioned. Mr. Koritz, what have you guys done in the past when meetings fall on a holiday? Do you go to the following Thursday or just skip that meeting?
Every year, the planning commission is asked to review their entire calendar. So usually November-ish or so, every year we present a calendar to the planning commission. We forecast if a planning commission meeting is scheduled to occur on a holiday. And essentially the question that we ask of the planning commission at that point in time is, do you want to skip this meeting? Do you want to move it to another Thursday of the month or even a different day of the month? So that, that's already built into the system. So there's essentially deference that's given to the planning commission, but staff tries to set you all up for success or at least present something for else all to chew on.
Okay, then should we note like the schedule review sometime in our bylaws too, like the commission to discuss annual scheduling at some point?
If it's not in here already and I'm double checking right now, it could be along the lines of the planning commission shall review their annual calendar for the following year in the fourth quarter of the current year. Something of that nature, that way you're not getting tied to anyone's specific meeting, but we're, we're having forethought into when it's going to occur.
I don't know if I want to wordsmith it right now, but based on that recommendation from Mr. Kowit, I am going to vaguely suggest that we add a part that says the planning commission will decide alternative dates.
I think review and discuss the following year's meeting calendar. Or review and finalize, discuss and finalize, something like that.
Thank you, Commissioner Connolly. Chair Chavez, let's do something similar to that. We'll add another part and say the planning commission will approve. Will prove in sometime in the quarter before the year, all the meetings. We can leave it at that because I think that gets our point that everyone has suggested and wordsmith it later unless we can, there are suggestions to wordsmith it now.
I might have a suggestion. So it could be the commission shall approve an annual calendar.
During fourth quarter.
During the fourth quarter.
Thank you, Mr. Kowit. If there's an objection, Chair Chavez, let's do the suggestion of Mr. Kowit. And please let me, us know if we need to repeat that.
I think we need to end that sentence really quick and I think Commissioner Connolly was trying to end that one briefly.
Yeah, of the, of the previous year or prior year.
I think that would work. In the prior year.
Yeah, Chair Chavez, if you put the commission shall approve an annual calendar in the prior year.
So we're taking out the fourth quarter, correct?
Yes, I believe that's correct.
I'll put it, I'll put it in the chat. And then just a quick question, Mr. Koritz. To what did you guys do like in the beginning of this stay-at-home order? Were just meetings canceled indefinitely? And then similar for fire season too. I don't think in, in Oxnard, we were shut down relief for fire season three years ago. But is it, I mean, natural disasters and stuff like that, I guess, just happened? Is it just like an indefinite kind of shutdown?
We actually haven't shut down due to COVID whatsoever. Other jurisdictions, we kept trying to move forward even during the fire disasters that were happening. So the, the general thought is you have an annual calendar that projects what we're trying to do. And then we don't always know what applications will be ending up on which calendars. There are times to cancel meetings, there are times to ask for special meetings. So that flexibility is already written into the way that citizen advisory groups just function throughout the state. So I'll leave it broadly, but the planning commission approving an annual calendar in the prior year, I think that gives you, gives you the ability to do what you're, what you're seeking.
Thank you, Commissioner Connolly and Mr. Kowit for that. I believe that we're good with the general and even wordsmithing of those additions in regards to my amendment two. And if there's an objection, we're going to move on to part C of Chair Chavez's draft. And I am still going to propose that we delete it unless there's an objection from my fellow members, Chair Chavez.
Yes, Vice Chair, I will just agree with you and also agree with the comments from staff in regards to, you know, when it starts getting the Brown Act involved with that. I know in past practices, it used to be placed on the agenda, but very, very on the top of the agenda that it was almost overlooked all the time. So I would actually just recommend that we just delete the whole section. And, you know, if we have questions, we know that we are allowed to reach out to staff as, as any member of the public is allowed to, in addition to our questions during the actual full meeting.
Thank you, Chair Chavez. I think I'm actually on the same page as you, so I'm sorry if I misconstrued myself. I am for deleting that agenda review meeting clause. If there's any objection from Commissioner Connolly or any comments, I'm going to propose that we do a strike through of it.
I stated differently before, but I, I think I have a resolution now after hearing everyone's comments that more of a study, like a study session line would have been desirable, you know, when. So I read it as an agenda review meeting was an option. And then I, I have never been to an agenda review meeting, but I stated that that would be something that I was interested in, but I misunderstood. I didn't know that you guys read the agenda beforehand. So I, I misspoke and I agree with you, if that made any sense at all.
I think it did to Mr. Connolly, but even if it didn't, I think I hear that.
On the same page.
Yeah, I think that I hear that the action to, let's, Chair Chavez, yeah, the strike through just so. I believe that the full planning commission members might have some thoughts and so at least they'll see that as a strike through just for their needs. If there's an objection, we'll move on to the next, what is now part D in regards to special meetings. I had nothing specific in regards to my own meetings. And so I'll leave it up to my other subcommittee members if we want to further amend it or make any comments. And seeing none, we.
I have one comment, question.
I have one now, but yeah, go Commissioner Connolly, please.
We just have an asterisk by resolution 2019 through 2023, possibly the bottom on what, either where to find that information or what it is.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'll just, in regards to that, that technically should have been in red. That was the most recent bylaws that I from the, the one that we're currently working on. So I just added that because we're, you know, the bylaws are all, everything numbered in government. So that's where that's coming from. It's not necessarily that one has to go searching for it. It would just be considered the previous bylaws. But yes, that's actually should have been in red, so I apologize for that.
Thank you, both Commissioner Connolly and Chair Chavez. I think at this time, I'm good with the general action. I think we're just a little bit ambiguous or iffy in regards to the word resolution number 2019 dash 23. So I think if there's an objection, let's just an italicization or strike through of as provided by resolution number 2019 dash 23. And we'll call out this section because I believe we're going to have something about special meetings later in the bylaws. I know I at least do in my amendment. So let's just, let's strike through resolution number 2019 dash 23 and say as provided by section link and we can come back to it later. And I'll take any comments or objections at this time.
I apologize, Vice Chair, I was reading something else. Can you repeat?
Yes. Yeah, let us strike through resolution number 2019 dash 23 and insert section number blank. Cause I'm pretty sure we're going to have something about special meetings later.
Exactly.
Exactly, right, okay.
Yeah, maybe, okay. Thank you. If there's no objection, we'll go to what's now part E, the Ralph Brown Act shall govern all meetings of the commission. I have no comments of my own and looking to my full subcommittee members.
Vice Chair, I'm sorry, just a quick question and I apologize. If we can just go back to section C, I know we stripped it out. And again, this was in regards to the agenda review meeting. I guess this is kind of posed to staff in regards to this item. The agenda review meetings, although that many times they were posted, but they were overlooked on the agenda, the public was allowed to participate. Now, was this an opportunity to have a full-on dive in to the agenda? Or was it simply just for a quick review, one to two minute summary and answer any questions?
I'm happy to respond to that. During the five years I've been at the city of Oxnard, there was one agenda review and it was a noticed meeting to comply with the Brown Act, but it really became
And it was a noticed meeting to comply with the Brown Act, but it really became a de facto mini planning commission meeting. From the city attorney's office perspective, we support the the deletion of this language. We believe that it does not contribute to transparency, and I think it can give the perception that decisions are being made outside of the public eye, even though that is not the case. But we believe that open and public as we are right now is the best way to ensure that the the public is fully aware of what is going on.
I appreciate that, Ms. Rosal. Thank you, Vice Chair, for indulging me in going back.
Uh, yes, of course. Um, and, um, yeah, thank you. We will move past that part B and go to notice for meetings, um, the only part A. It, um, correct me if I wrong, that said something new from Chair Chavez, and I have no comments or objections to it, and I in general like it. And I'm looking for other objections or comments from my fellow members.
Um, again, Vice Chair, um, as already stated, uh, that was simply just, um, to bring us in line with what the city already has with the sunshine ordinance. It may be overkill adding the text to our bylaws as, you know, technically the sunshine ordinance is the the rule of law for our city when it deals with public noticing. But that is technically a new item, um, in our bylaws.
And Staff's going to chime in here for just a quick second. We don't have any objection to adding the reference to the sunshine ordinance, but the numbers actually are not correct. So the the city council is specifically identified in the sunshine ordinance as having the twelve days and the seven days as are identified here. But the policy continues to go on. It says other policy bodies. Have a seven-day notice, uh, for when things are to be posted, and then it's silent, uh, about special meetings. So we would make the recommendation that if this language is to be included, the twelve becomes seven, uh, to be consistent with, uh, the ordinance. And then is it necessary to have, um, any reference at all to special meetings? If it's going to remain seven itself? If we're looking at state law, open meeting law, if you're calling a special emergency session, and I'm. Yeah, twenty twenty-four hours would be that requirement. And I don't think that. I don't think that's necessarily necessary for your bylaws, because that would be, uh. An an extreme case that I think something like that would be happening for the planning commission. Generally speaking, we've been pretty good with staying with our regular meetings, um, or if we need to schedule a special meeting, we have been following the the regular rules, if you will.
Thank you, Mr. Kovitz, for those comments. Um, I'm going to make a couple. I am leaning towards changing this seven days before a special meeting to three days or removing it entirely. The am seven days before a special meeting. Um, looking for comments from my fellow members.
Uh, Vice Chair, I'll just make a couple of comments, um, and I appreciate Staff's. Clearly, I didn't finish reading the rest of the text for the sunshine ordinance. But I I I tend to lean closer to Staff's recommendation that we just remove, um, the special meeting. Because we have been so good in regards or done well, I should say, um, in regards to, um, posting of our agendas and, um, information for staff, um, for the public. And because seven is already the the minimum number for city council, I think it could possibly be that we just. Um, strike that, um, or delete it altogether and then just keep seven days. As kind of like the rule of thumb for our meetings.
Thank you, Chair Chavez. Uh, any comments from Commissioner Conley?
Oh, I just put it in the chat, so I wouldn't forget, but just for clarity, I would recommend saying seven, seven days before scheduled meetings. Because obviously a special meeting is going to still be scheduled, and then a regular meeting is scheduled as well.
I'll make my comments to Commissioner Conley. I'm I'm going to push back on that because, in my personal opinion, I think scheduled would include a scheduled special meeting or a scheduled emergency meeting. And I'm not inclined to put scheduled, and I'd like to propose regular meeting. Any further comments from you, Commissioner Conley, in regards to that or to?
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, again, if there's no objection, I think, um, since I was, um, and the not indifferent, I'm neutral in regards to either alternative. I believe that we should strike and seven days before a special meeting. If there's no objection.
So just to confirm that we're just going to remove. The section that's highlighted, um, or are we just removing the seven days before?
We're removing, I'm proposing to remove the entire highlighted section. Okay, thank you very much. Is there any last minute comments or for rule two of Chair Chavez's draft as amended right now?
Can we just take a quick five-minute break or three?
And I was actually just going to recommend that, and now since it's two of us, there'll be a majority. I I, um, I assume that there will be no objection from Chair Chavez, and we will go, let me see what time it is. It's seven fifty-two. Let's do a full five minutes because the next rule is quite. Well, a lot. Um, so let's do five minutes. Um, I'll I'll be back seven fifty-six. We'll give everyone until seven fifty-seven.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no objection, um, we are in recess for five minutes. Thank you. I, if there's no objection, I'm going to wait up to two more minutes for Chair Chavez to come back to the video. Um, so we'll stand at ease for a couple more minutes. Thank you. Thank you, uh, Chair Chavez. Um, I will now continue this, uh, meeting, and we will now go on to rule three of Chair Chavez's draft that was distributed. Actually, I'm going to pause and ask if Staff is ready.
Yes, Staff is ready.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Kovitz, for that confirmation. Let's, uh, focus section by section, um, the sections being the italicized. Uh, descriptions, so we'll start with in general. I see that this is a new section, and I will look to Chair Chavez for any general comments.
Uh, thank you, Vice Chair, for, um, this option. Uh, again, as was already stated, this is a new section that is, um, coming into play and is open for any changes as, um, deemed necessary. Um, there are four sections to the in general for meeting and hearing procedures. And I am available if there's any questions in regards to it.
Thank you, Chair Chavez. Um, I will make my comments in regards to part C. I previously had something in relation to that with my, um, amendment two. However, it was in regards to the technological flexibility, and, um, if there's no concerns raised by staff, I like, um, or am in favor of how Chair Chavez has worded option C in regards to showing that we're open to the public in various needs. Um, so basically, I'm good with how it stands, how, um, the in general section. Commissioner Conley, any comments or objections?
I had, um, it wasn't, it wasn't relevant to this new section, but in the current bylaws that we're we're operating under, under C, when it said no proxy, I just had a question mark on that, on what what that meant and what that pertained to.
Okay, uh, you're just giving us a heads up, uh, in regards to the proxy. Uh, am I correct in that, Commissioner Conley?
Yeah, I just wasn't sure what that meant and then where it falls under.
Okay, gotcha. Um. We'll, we'll leave it to that section to get a legal distinction or comment from staff. So, um, if there's no objections in general to the text or specifically, um, we'll move on to quorum. Seeing no hands, um, in regards to quorum, uh, I see that there were no changes, um, from Chair Chavez. I am going to turn the attention of my fellow members to my. Amendment five and amendment six in regards to this section. Amendment five, I would like to just remove that. I honestly like this simplicity of quorum more, um, and so I'm going to move on to amendment six. And I see that, I know that it's wordy, wordy, um, and I saw this in review of other planning commission bylaws. And I I added this in because I wanted something more formal in regards to what defines a quorum and how to get a quorum, so it just provides more flexibility to getting a quorum. And I am open to any comments as.
I I appreciate the clarity. We, um, in another board that I sit on, we have, um, our quorum clearly defined and what that means. And if quorum's not met, then what happens? For that meeting? So, yeah, Commissioner Reho, I I appreciate your clarity. I won't call it wordiness, clarity.
Okay, um, so thank you for that in regards to defining quorum. And I'm open to any comments more on that subsection or the probably the more possibly. Newsworthy in regard to the exception to absence of quorum because of abstentions due to a conflict of interest. I'm just saying that there might be a possibility that this might happen, and I want, I personally want something formalized that will allow us to get a quorum to roll on something. Um, and I'm looking to my fellow subcommittee members or staff in regards to this.
I would, for ease of note-taking, I would, Commissioner Chavez, just put under quorum A, um, to add amendment RA six proposal. One through or, yeah, one through.
Well, I, yeah, I am, I am, the original only has a section A, and so I broke it up into a one and two, and then added three and four with several subsections underneath. And if there's an objection from Chair Chavez, I would like to just add that, uh, for. Yeah.
And Staff is, uh, supportive of this edit.
Thank you for that confirmation, Mr. Kovitz. I'll wait till Chair Chavez makes it the edits. Uh, thank you again for doing this, um, life work. And, um, obviously, we can come back to it. And, uh. Well. If there is no objection, we're going to move to the next subsection, italicized voting. I. It appears that this doesn't change from our current bylaws, and I have no comments on this. If Chair Chavez would like to make any or Commissioner Conley.
When it says requisite number of members present, should we clarify that, that it's always? Is it always a minimum? We need to have a minimum of four members at a meeting?
Legally, that is correct, yes.
Legally, that is correct, yes.
It's not two thirds. Like if we, if we didn't have someone appointed, it would still, if, say, we had two empty slots, it would still have to be four persons present?
Yes, because the, the size of the commission, whether constituted or not, or appointed or not, is still seven, so you would still need four.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Conley, what were you, where were you looking at?
Sorry, on voting A, no vote may be conducted on the item before the commission unless the commission's requisite number of members is present. I would just put in parentheses four.
Were you putting that as a requisite or in another area?
No, there, yeah, under A. So requisite number of members is present, yeah.
I have no objections at this time, but I feel I wanna amend it somehow later. But I'm not gonna go into that right now. Is there any other?
You have two weeks to study up on it.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Conley. If, is there any further comments or questions on this subsection voting? Seeing none, we will go to subsection on meeting procedures. We will do this going part by part, because I have two amendments. And there are more or less. Well, we'll just go section by, or sentence by, part by part. So for part A, I'll look to Chair Chavez and then I will comment on my amendment eight.
Vice Chair, this one is new. It is not part of the original meeting procedures for the chair to call the meeting to order and announce the date time and the meeting type. Although it has been a practice that past chairs have done, this is just now put into, in words and into the bylaws.
Thank you for that, Chair Chavez. And actually, honestly, with those comments, I am going to retract my amendment eight. I just felt that staff shouldn't be the one saying shall announce, when in practice it's been the chair of the meeting. And with your comments, I believe, and your edit, I believe that's the correct amendment. Any comments from Commissioner Conley?
Not specifically in, in regards to A, but under meeting procedures. So I can wait until we get to behind.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to part B. I have nothing in regards to that, and it doesn't seem like a change from our current bylaws. And so I will now move on to. Actually, I'm gonna move on to the four parts of part C, D, E, and F, which relates to our current section four C. And I have my amendment seven that relates to it. And I will start again with Chair Chavez for any general or specific comments on C, D, E, and F.
None at this time, Vice Chair. I did not see any necessary changes to those. But again, available for any questions or comments.
Thank you. Change I made was in, for amendment seven, was striking out limited to in the original four C four, which is in Chair Chavez's.
B, I believe.
F.
Oh, sorry.
And so I am proposing through amendment seven to strike out minimum of, oh, or limited to. I'll hear any comments from my fellow members before I make more.
I just had a question in regards what is displayed on the screen under F is states that each member of the public is allowed a minimum of three minutes to speak, but additional time may be granted by the chair or the majority of the members. I understand what you have listed. So I don't know if I rewrote it when I put it in or if I missed something. Because I know in yours, it does show that there is limited to the three minutes.
Yes. I'm trying to look at the original right now and see if I missed time.
No, I have it, it's under four C four. It's on the current bylaws. It says each member of the public speaking items shall be limited to three minutes unless additional time is granted. So it's not a minimum of three minutes. You don't have to talk for a full three minutes.
Okay, so I, I had mistyped it.
Then I'm gonna, I'm gonna toss it over to staff and ask, would your recommendation be, as my amendment seven has it, it would read public comments items shall be three minutes or shall be a minimum of three minutes like Chair Chavez's current draft is?
What we would recommend is going with Chair Chavez's language right now, because that's consistent with measure M. It allows a minimum of three minutes.
Thank you for that comment. And since I resourced measure M, I will go with Chair Chavez's unless there's any comments or objections from Commissioner Conley.
I just, I'll put a star by that. I feel like the, the verbiage is just a little confusing, because the first couple times I read it, I read it, like I said, that somebody needs to speak for a full three minutes. But now I understand that the law, the governing body says that they have a minimum of three minutes and we could then say each person has five minutes or seven minutes or whatever. So I just put a star by it to, to clarify that, because if, if I was a little confused, I could see how other people would be confused too.
Okay, granted. Well, I think we'll come back to it. But if we debate or discuss further, we'll be looking at the Chair Chavez's minimum of three minutes verbiage. If there are no further comments in regards to part G, I have nothing in regards to that, and I'm just finishing out that section. Okay. Seeing no hands, I will move on to the consent agenda. And I'm looking at my notes. I will look to Chair Chavez for any comments while I go through my own notes.
Vice Chair, in this section, and I apologize to my colleagues and the public that there were changes made to it, so they were not changed into the red color. So there has been some changes to them. And again, if there's any discussion or questions in regards to them. I think in this section, I was trying to simplify them more and condense some as opposed to them being spaced out. But there has been changes in the sections.
Acknowledge, Chair Chavez. We go to Commissioner Conley as I still try to interpret my own notes.
I mean, I, I have, I have nothing about the consent agenda. It does seem pretty wordy for what it is, but it's, this version has at least more cutback than the previous version, so I thank you for that.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Conley. So I am, it appears that approval of the minutes is not in your section, Chair Chavez. And so I'm gonna comment on that one first and refer to my amendment versions nine A and nine B. Although seeing that you don't have approval of the minutes in your draft, I'm almost leaning towards retracting nine A and nine B. The reason for.
Vice Chair, sorry. In section A, it does list that this portion of the agenda shall include minor routine items, whether previous meeting minutes, continued public hearing, new public hearing, or requests for resolutions of intentions or other matters.
Okay. I'll try to explain with my amendment. So just looking at the approval of the minutes part of that part A. My version of nine A shows that that commission members are recommended to abstain, but under Roberts rules, you can't require people to abstain. And so I wanted that just to be in our bylaws for people, for commission members, just to be more aware of it. In regards to my revision nine B, in regards again to the approval of the minutes, I removed that section of members not present at a meeting for which minutes are being considered may choose at their discretion to participate or abstain from the approval of those minutes. Again, my contention is that it's up to the members to decide and that I know that in general, we were assuming that members were abstaining, but in my personal practice, it's up to the members to do that. Those are my comments right now. I'm not sure if I wanna break out that meeting minutes and try to implement the revision proposals that I have. Looking for other comments at this time.
Well, I, I hear what you're saying, Commissioner Reho, and I'm just trying to to, to put it in formal words myself, too. I think exactly what you're saying is that it's, it's customary for somebody to abstain, but you can't write it in the bylaws, but how do you make a recommendation or describe a customary practice?
Chair Chavez, looking to you for comments, and then I'll make a suggestion.
Honestly, I'm not even a hundred percent sure. What I have listed is what I have listed, but I, I would honestly turn to staff for their feedback on if they have any.
Let's go with that, Chair Chavez. On staff, just looking at my versions nine A and nine B, is there any general comments that you'd like to make?
Yes, there is. Under A, we would recommend that you strike continued public hearings, new public hearings, requests for resolutions or intentions. Typically, you do not have a public hearing on a consent item. That is a, a separate item where you'd open the public hearing and take testimony. By definition, a consent is something which does not have any substantive discussions. So that, that should be stricken. And then new public hearings would also not be on a consent agenda. That would be on the, under the new public hearings, which are discussed further on in these proposed rules. And then if there's a request for resolutions of intentions, that should be in, an item where probably typically would be for the commissioner comments near the end. If there's a desire for there to be documents prepared, that would not be on a consent item. So those would be recommendations that we believe should be stricken from section, subsection A.
Thank you, Mr. Rozell, for that. And I see Chair Chavez that you appears that you agree with his comments. And if there's an objection from Commissioner Conley, I agree with that too. I'm still gonna go with my other suggestion that that we go over nine A and nine B at a later time. And if you don't mind, Chair Chavez, just to put in parentheses, discuss nine A or nine B at a later time. On part A. For there's no further comments for part B. I have no comments. And it doesn't appear to have been changed by Chair Chavez, Commissioner Conley. Are there any comments on part B? I apologize. I actually did have something for part B. My amendment ten. I added flex. I added the methods in which an item can be removed from the consent portion of the agenda, either by the chair solely or by any member of the commission upon receiving a second. I know sometimes in other organizations that I've been in, it's any member. This gives a little more power to the chair in that regard. And so I am open for suggestions or further edits in regards to that, to keep it or just to make it by any member. But it didn't seem to be, it was, it appeared to me to be a little bit ambiguous who could remove an item from the consent portion and if multiple people needed to. Looking for any comments from my fellow members at this time.
I would just say to leave it the same as allow an opportunity for the members to, you know, pull an item for discussion. I understand what you were trying to say, but I, I believe this one is fine the way that it is.
Thank you, Chair Chavez. Commissioner Conley.
Yeah, I mean, I disagree with what you're, with your statement about giving the, the chair a little bit more pull, because my understanding is that the chair's main role is to just lead the meeting, not necessarily be the, the know all sale. So I, I think we could keep it the same way that it is.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Conley. And with those comments, I'd like to retract my, my, what's it, proposal ten. And in regards to C and let's go to part C in regards to public hearings.
I believe this would actually be striked out in, in line of the comments from Mr. Rozell as it relates to section A.
Thank you, Chair Chavez. If there's no objection, I agree with that. Thank you, part D. In regards to the consent agenda, I'm any comments of this, this time?
I would actually ask Mr. Rozell if there was any comments in regards to D.
As to the first sentence in, in D, I, I fully agree. The second sentence of D, where there needs to be a, a second before the item is removed. What I have seen during my representation of cities is that if any member, be it a member of the city council or planning commission requests that an item be taken off the consent agenda, it is, so there can be the discussion. So that is, that is the, the practice that, that I have seen. And it would be my recommendation that you strike the, the, the second sentence, but that is something that is is not illegal to have the the second, but it is, it is the 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 practice that I've seen over a number of years.
Thank you, Mr. Rosell. And it's been the practice in organizations that I've been in that the second's not needed. And I'm looking to Commissioner Connolly or Chair Chavez that I would recommend removing that highlighted portion.
That makes sense to me.
Thank you.
And the simpler, the better always. So.
Thank you.
Staff has one additional recommendation for D, the very end of it. We don't think we need to include the language after the word separately. So and just simply be and considered separately. The rest of that's the sentence. We're not going to, if something is pulled from the consent calendar, you still deal with it in that consent portion, if you will. There's a discussion that happens in that consent portion of of the meeting. But it's not moved into the public hearing portion of the of the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Corwitz. Again, if there's no objection, I'm gonna go with changes that Chair Chavez has just put on the draft. So on the opposite end of what Commissioner Connolly said in regards to simplify, I am proposing a new section. I will focus your attention on my proposal eleven in regards to further defining or specifying what an ex parte declaration is for a public hearing. I, in reviewing other planning commission bylaws, I saw that it was usually explicitly stated in the bylaws. And I know that we get a general recommendation of what should be declared from staff. And so I'm proposing to put it in writing in the bylaws. And I'm looking for comments at this time.
Staff's going to chime in here really quick. We support the addition of this language. We think it makes sense to identify what ex parte communications are. So thank you for proposing this. In addition to site visits and communications, other things to potentially consider. If there's, if someone is going to recuse themselves, this is also usually a time when you would do so. And you can do so because of those conflict of interest maps that we've shared. If there is a financial benefit that someone might have from a project, you could recuse yourself from that for that reason as well. So those are are other things to potentially consider in this section. On the flip side, if someone has had communications with somebody and they disclose that, you could still participate in the meeting if you can declare that you can still hear the matter before you in a fair and objective manner. So if you wish to include any text about the ability to participate in a meeting, that's something that you can include in this section as well. It's not a required thing, but some food for thought for you all.
Thank you, Mr. Corwitz. I'm ruminating on that. If there are no comments from my fellow commissioners, I am going to propose. I'm going to propose my version as distributed proposal eleven or amendment RA eleven with the additions of conflict of interest and financial impact. We don't have to wordsmith it right now. I am neutral in regards to calling out. Well, that's my proposal right now. Looking for any comments.
I think it's definitely important to clarify ex parte. So I think what you have is good. I think I took some notes on what Mr. Corwitz said, and I will have more suggestions that are better worded by next meeting on that, because I I do think it's important to clarify what that is.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Commissioner Connolly. Yes, I was trying to figure out what other, that last part that Mr. Corwitz was suggesting. And I'll review this video in regards to wordsmithing something also. Thank you, Chair Chavez, for adding that into your draft. If there are no further comments, we'll go to the subsection continued public hearings. I have no comments. I'm looking to my fellow commissioners. Moving on to new public hearings.
Vice Chair Oweho, if if I may.
Yes.
Under continued public hearings, staff would recommend that the phrase if not heard on the consent agenda be deleted. Because as we discussed earlier, public hearings are are not heard on a consent agenda. So the rest of the language is 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 fine.
Thank you, Mr. Rosell. Given those comments, I agree with that. And Chair Chavez, it seems you appear to agree with that. And if there's no objection from Commissioner Connolly, we'll now move on to new public hearings. My only comment is it might not be rule four, so we can put rule length. But no strong objections or changes that I'd like to add. Any other comments? And we'll go to manager staff. I'll have you, Chair Chavez, explain a little because I I do believe it was changed, some wording.
Yes, Vice Chair, some of the wording and actually the order was changed to allow staff to make comments and updates prior to the commissioners' comments. And this would have been an opportunity for commissioners to ask questions of staff and then be able to provide their comments during the commissioner comments. And if there was no commissioner comments, then we would just move into the adjournment. This is the process that I have seen. And the other commissions that I sit on, of course, one of them does have manager staff comments and, you know, the body's comments at the beginning of the agenda, whereas we are doing ours towards the end. Again, available for any questions or comments.
Thank you, Chair Chavez. And really, all in in regards to my proposal twelve, I really just wanted to add the staff, which you do already in your change up there. And I honestly like, not honestly, but I would prefer the default to yours. It's a little bit simpler language. And I'll look to Commissioner Connolly for any further comments.
I I think it's it's very clear, as stated. So I agree.
Thank you. It looks like we're good with that language and move on to commissioner comments. Chair Chavez, I believe there were changes on this one as well.
Again, Vice Chair, it's just changing the order and kind of detailed as to what the commissioner comments were, an opportunity for.
Thank you, Chair Chavez. I have nothing. And I do like your wording of it, Commissioner Connolly.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to adjournments. Let's see. I think, actually, it's on to me because it doesn't appear there were changes by Chair Chavez. I'll go to you first, Commissioner Connolly, if you want to make comments.
Not in regards to adjournment, but before we get to rule four, I had a comment. So adjournment looks fine to me. So.
Thank you. I'm gonna direct your attention to proposal thirteen. It adds a section that even though it keeps more or less the end time of eleven P M, unless extended by the commission by two thirds vote, it adds that no hearing can be, no new public hearing or study session report can be introduced after ten P M. Unless extended in subsection three. I understand that this is a further restriction, but I feel that by ten P M, we're gonna want to seriously consider if we want to add more. So honestly, that's my personal feeling in regards to that. And I'll defer to the majority of the subcommittee whether or not to add this provision. Comments from my fellow members.
I disagree. I think I feel like when we're we're towards the end of the agenda getting, if somebody's wrapping up, if we're doing a quick staff report and it's ten fifteen, that staff report, it could take an hour and we could have to hit the eleven P M cutoff, or it could take a quick eight minutes just to get that information out. So I don't think that I think having the hard eleven P M end time is is strong to just continue the business until that time ends and then begin again next meeting and finish what finish where we left off.
Thank you, Commissioner Connolly. While leaving up to you, Chair Chavez, in which way you'd like to go with.
I would say, Vice Chair, that as you can see on the screen, study sessions and reports was actually eliminated on mine.
I apologize, Chair Chavez. Yeah.
No, I I apologize for not making that known. I felt as agendas are created, they can easily be added to it as opposed to having a safe place for for it on the agenda. So I don't see a reason for us to, you know, have language that says no public hearing or study session report should be introduced. As there's not always a time that we do have study sessions or reports. As far as the commission journey, I believe it's important that we have a set time of the eleven P M unless an item goes longer. We've been fortunate so far since I've been on the commission that we haven't had any long strenuous items. But I would just recommend that adjournment remains the same unless the staff has other feelings on it or any other comments from the commission or from yourself or Commissioner Connolly.
Before I have staff comment, I would just like to throw it out there to change eleven P M to ten P M unless there's objections from either one of you. Or obviously, it's fine if you object. I just want to throw it out there.
I would like staff input on if if they've had meetings run past ten o'clock. Like Commissioner Chavez said, I haven't seen it, but I've only been to a handful of meetings myself. So I don't know if that's I I think the ten, the ten P M is very respectful of everyone's time. And then if we did have a long agenda or things that had a lot of discussion with that two thirds vote extending the time option would be would be fair and respectful to everyone's time.
I thank you, Commissioner Connolly. I'll pass it back to Chair Chavez before going to staff. What are your feelings about eleven P M or ten P M? Or ten thirty, if you want to put that in the mix.
I believe we have already spoken at our last meeting in regards to the end times. But I I do agree with Commissioner Connolly that we want to be respectful of staff's time. You know, we have to keep in mind that they are here all day and then they have to continue to be with us for our meetings. So I would defer to staff as to what they feel comfortable or what is an appropriate timestamp. But those are my comments.
Thank you, Chair Chavez. If possible.
I have one more quick question. And this for staff, too, is when we changed, when the planning commission meeting was changed from seven to six, was that eleven P M cutoff was not changed as well, right? So essentially, we got another hour by starting at six and then still have the eleven P M cutoff. So your ten P M cutoff time would kind of fall into the same hours allocated for this meeting, correct?
Thank you, Commissioner Connolly. And now I'll pass it on to staff to reply to Commissioner Connolly's comments. And then my own plus Chair Chavez's in regards to your feelings about ten, ten thirty, eleven P M end time.
Commissioners, thank you. So, you know, first of all, thank you for trying to be sensitive to staff. That's that's awfully kind of all of you. But to kind of tick off the questions here, when the start hour had been changed in the prior version, the end time did not change. So that's directly to answer Commissioner Connolly's question. In terms of changing the hours, I think we're fairly neutral when it comes right down to it. What I would say is city council currently has their protocols. New items essentially are supposed to start before ten and to wrap up by eleven, or they need additional votes from members of the city council to keep going. So just if we're trying to align with council, that's something to chew on. In terms of how many meetings do we have that go very late, knocking all the wood around you, but so far we've been pretty good about not going super late. That doesn't mean it won't happen. There are, over my career, I've been in a handful of very controversial controversial items that have gone past midnight with both planning commissions as well as city council members. So I I want to be, have us all be prepared for those meetings. But exactly what you do with this language, we defer to you with those general comments.
Thank you, Mr. Corwitz. I am, this is obviously not a formal motion. I am gonna recommend at least for right now, amending eleven P M to ten P M. And comments from my fellow commissioners at this time.
Like I previously stated, with that with that two thirds vote option, I think that's that's really fair. And if there was something that was controversial on the agenda that needed, that was time sensitive or needed to be continued that night, then we could vote on it and go from there.
Thank you, Commissioner Connolly. Any further comments?
I would just say, just to keep it at eleven P M, just to stay in line with city council, I'd rather have a buffer you know, that we have extra time so that we don't have to go into the whole two thirds vote. But those are my comments. I'm keeping it at eleven P M in line with what city council has.
Okay, to keep it really flexible right now, I am going to propose all options and just ask Chair Chavez to put ten, ten thirty, eleven, and we can discuss it at a later time. Sorry to punt it, but I want to right now. So I was going to suggest a compromise at ten thirty, but I feel weird about it thirty times. So thank you very much, Chair Chavez, for adding that in. If there's no objections, moving on to rule four.
Vice Chair.
Yes, Chair Chavez. I'm sorry, comment from Commissioner Connolly, but you go first, Chair Chavez.
I apologize. I would say that this would probably be a good ending point. You know, it's not our goal to try to solve, you know, go through this entire document. And again, in in order to be respectful of staff's time, I I believe this would be a good ending point, and it gives us an opportunity to go back and review what the changes that we recommended tonight and maybe consider other changes for our next meeting. But I would recommend that we move to adjournment for our subcommittee this evening, as I believe we've already been at this for almost an half hour and a half. for our subcommittee this evening as I believe we've already been at this for almost an half, hour and a half. So we've been at it for a while. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Chair Chavez. Commissioner Conley, your comments on regards to, I believe it was rule three in general, and then any other comments you had.
So I, I agree with Chair Chavez that this is a great time to end. But just in regards to meetings, I don't know, obviously, how it is in person because I've never been to an in-person meeting, but I know on our Zoom screen, we can see all eight of us and then we see, you know, who we see. And like I said today, there was somebody, there was a name that I didn't recognize. I'm just wondering, and I'm sure that the public didn't recognize them as well. So I'm just wondering at any point in the beginning of the meeting if there would be a time for introductions. Not introducing all of us because our names are on the screen, but just saying, and we have so-and-so with us from Southern California Edison. Just a real quick intro so we know who those blanks are. And then people, for the public watching, they, they know who those blanks are as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Conley. I'm not opposed to that, to adding it in, especially just in terms of discussion, debate. If there's no objection from Chair Chavez, can we just, I'd like to add that somewhere in meeting procedures and then obviously we can discuss it at a later time.
Under in general, maybe, I just wrote introductions. But like I said, I wanted to clarify, we don't need to introduce all of us, all of the staff that's present, but just maybe the items, blanks, like I said.
Staff is gonna jump in here really quick. Under public hearing procedures probably makes the most amount of sense because the individual teams aren't necessarily here at the beginning of the agenda, especially if it's a long agenda, but they would be here for their item. So in the section that Chair Chavez had pulled up here, public hearing procedures, the chair opens the public hearing, staff makes the presentation. When we get into the portion about the applicant presentation, perhaps that would be where we have the introduction of the team. Somewhere, somewhere in there would be the general thought.
Thank you, Mr. Corwitz. Yeah, and thank you, Commissioner Conley, for your question slash comment. Chair Chavez, if we can just, we'll add it, yeah. And we'll just put it in to discuss at our next meeting. We can put, yeah, whatever you feel comfortable with. Thank you again, Chair Chavez, for making all of those edits. Truly appreciated. I would just like to ask for any general comments on what we discussed in row one, two, or three before I go into my comments in general and adjournments. Seeing none, I will ask staff if they have any general comments they'd like to make.
No general comments aside from thank you for your volunteerism and the hours that you're clearly putting into this effort. You're taking it very seriously, so thank you with that. And we look forward to continuing to support all of you.
Thank you very much for those kind words, Mr. Corwitz. And I obviously like to thank Chair Chavez and Commissioner Conley for, I assume it was the few hours that we spent reviewing these. And obviously, right now, I am honestly absolutely giddy about going through the bylaws. I believe there's so many changes that, you know, in my opinion, that I've gone through is that the bylaws are there to more formalize the space, not just because it looks good procedurally, but there will be a time likely that there's gonna be a contentious item. And when, in my personal opinion, when we have something to fall on, the chair won't look like they're doing something arbitrarily. And I think this will just improve the stature of the planning commission and whoever the chair happens to be at that time. And so that was some of my motive, motivation for proposing a subcommittee bylaws revision. And obviously, there are others. But I'm very excited of the progress that we've made. Honestly, we're like halfway done because the rest of it, on some of the sections, we didn't touch. So this is, since now we have a procedure more or less, I assume. But obviously, it's not gonna be for sure that we're gonna be doing informal consideration and just discussion at the next meeting. And possibly, we'll be making a motion to propose something to the full planning commission at the next meeting or the meeting thereafter. And so I am going to adjourn the meeting if there are no objections from my fellow commission members. And this subcommittee meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for your time, staff and fellow subcommittee members. And I look forward to seeing you all at the next meeting. Thank you very much and good evening, everyone.
You all, enjoy your evening. Great work.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.